Regular city council work session from Monday, May 4th. It's 10 a.m. and we'll go ahead and get started. And I'm going to start with the introduction of new city employees. Are you guys going to take it department by department? Yes, okay. So our first, who wants to introduce Jackie to us?
I will.
Fantastic.
So Jackie is on the call, I believe. Jack, are you here? Oh, yeah, I see him. Hi Jackie, so Jackie is our new Parks and Rec Superintendent. He started a couple of weeks ago and anyway, I'll let him talk a little bit about himself, but we welcome him to the team.
Thank you, Jim. Again, my name is Jackie Boobinack. We moved here about a month ago. We're still strung out between here and Oklahoma. Hope to end all of that next week. Montrose is a wonderful community. We have enjoyed it in the month that been here. Noticed a lot of cool things when we first came to town. A lot of little things that you guys were doing very, very well, in our opinion. I'm a landscape architect, worked for the City of Tulsa Parks and Recreation Department for just under 18 years. Retired and wanted to do other things, so it's, it is good to be here.
Great, welcome. It's nice having you and I can't wait till we all get a chance to actually meet in person.
Absolutely.
This is strange. I bet you've had a chance to meet some of your colleagues in person, but I think city council has been pretty sequestered. So we'll, we'll get with you before long.
Fantastic, thank you.
Next up, Stephen, do you want to introduce our new Assistant City Attorney?
I'd love to. So Matt comes from the 7th Judicial District as an Assistant City Attorney, or Assistant District Attorney. And then prior to that, he was in private practice and a law clerk in Anchorage. His law degree is from Gonzaga University School of Law. His undergrad is from Southern Oregon University, where he majored in criminology and interpretive dance, or something like that. Matt grew up in Spokane area and he enjoys hiking, camping, photography, target shooting, and long walks on the beach.
Thank you, Stephen. Good morning, Mayor Bynum, members of the city council. My name is Matt Magley Earl. I'm the Assistant City Attorney for the Public Safety. I was hired, first day was April 13th, where they handed me a mask and a computer and sent me home. Spokane, Washington's hometown. It's the city, most people know it, it's the first city that celebrated Father's Day. And it's the smallest city, I believe it's still the case, the smallest city ever hosted Expo World's Fair in 1974. I went to middle school there, part of high school and graduate school, law school. Montrose is the 13th community I've lived in. I've been here about three years and eight months. I moved here from Anchorage, as Stephen said, I drove here, actually. It's 3,323 miles. It took seven days and saw a lot of the country, which is a lot of fun. I was in private practice in Anchorage for three years and before that I worked for the court system for five in rural Alaska. I basically worked my way up the western coast of rural Alaska, Bethel, Nome, and Conseveu, which is, Conseveu is 37 miles above the Arctic Circle. I missed criminal law when I worked in Anchorage, my firm didn't do any. So I did participate in that area with, working at the Anchorage Crime Stoppers Board, where I was a volunteer there for two years. I moved here to join the DA's office. I was in Montrose County Court before Judge Morris for about 20 months and dealt the district court for the remainder of my time there. I really enjoyed living in this community. I've, I think it's really, we're blessed that we're this close downtown Montrose to a national park. And I spent a lot of time in there. Excited to be a part of this position, to work with MPD again in this new role. And thank you for having me.
Great, welcome. We're so glad to have you on as part of the team and likewise can't wait to meet you in person. I think we're all super excited actually about your position because it didn't exist a year ago. And this is something that staff and council thought really hard for. And I know we're really excited to see it all come out. So, thank you. Next, Chris Iverson. Who gets to introduce Chris?
Hello, this is Ann here somewhere on your screen. And I'm happy to introduce you to Chris Iverson, our Competitive Sports Program Coordinator. And his first day with us was just a couple of weeks ago. And he did his introduction and orientation over Zoom. Thanks HR for doing that for all of our new employees. And Chris was originally hired to manage, among some other things, our baseball program, which is on hiatus right now, as we're all working through COVID-19 regulations. But in the meantime, he's been a huge help out at our golf course. So if you happen to go and golf, you'll see Chris out there. And Chris comes to us from New York, upstate New York. But he stopped along the way. And Chris, I'd love for you to tell us a little bit more about yourself and how you ended up here in Montrose.
Yeah, good morning, everyone. As Ann said, I grew up in upstate New York, in the Finger Lakes region, in a small town. Went to college in Rochester, New York. And 15 years later, decided to move out west to Oregon. While I was in Rochester, I worked for a minor league basketball team. Doing a whole bunch of different things with them, starting as an intern and finishing as a head coach. And along the way, did just about every other job you can think of with that team. So I had an opportunity to come out to Oregon to coach at a basketball academy there. When things started to kind of shut down there, I was heading back east and figured I'd stop and tell you, I had to see my sister and new niece. And came across this job opening and here we are. And you know, everything's been great so far. Everybody's been welcoming and helpful. And I couldn't be more appreciative of that.
Fantastic, welcome. You must be a very flexible and adaptable person if you're hired to kick off baseball and, and that's not what we're doing this year.
It's been fun either way. I can think of worse places to be than a golf course.
Kudos to you for being flexible with us, thank you. Okay, and next, Zachary, our GIS Systems Analysis. Greg, I bet you that's your job.
Sure, yeah, I'd like to welcome Zach to the team. Zach comes to us with a wealth of GIS knowledge. We've had him on the team for, I think started end of February. So he's been around for a while. We threw him to the wolves, I think day one, wasn't it Zach? Took him out to Public Works and said, hey, guess what? You get to help with the faster integration. So he's handled that really well. And really just hit the ground running, really helping Eric out with, with his stuff and really focusing on getting the Cartograph stuff up and running so that it's really a useful tool for the Public Works folks. So getting that integrated with the GIS stuff. I will mute myself here and let Zach tell you a little bit about himself.
Well, good morning. Happy to be here and finally be able to speak with you all, as we're able to. I did start about first week of March, I think March 4th it was. And Greg's correct, I hit the ground running. So it's always fun when you can immediately get your hands dirty in your new, new job. I started working GIS as far back as 2006, when the Marine Corps told me that's what I was going to be doing. I didn't know what it was until then. And it was such a kind of niche community that I really enjoyed it. And so I decided to do that with my education. Went to the University of Wyoming, got my degree there in geography with a focus in GIS and remote sensing. I've worked a couple of careers under a very big umbrella that is GIS. Department of Defense Contracting, I've worked in energy infrastructure across the state of Wyoming. Wyoming's where I call home. I grew up in Green River and I've lived in Rock Springs for the past couple of years. When the job opportunity opened in Montrose, it looked like something that we were really interested in. And when a job opened there for my wife as well, it seemed like something we should do. And when we came and looked at the town, it was beautiful. I didn't believe it. When you're actually in Montrose and you're looking there, the western slope, and it looks like something out of a postcard and it, it shouldn't be that good in real life, but it is. The town was just really wonderful. And we were super excited to start setting up. So we're also in the process of moving, getting everything set up from one place to the other. But as that happens, we're, we're excited to, to make that transition and we're really excited to be in Montrose. Everybody has been super great, even though that's, you hit the ground running. It's been really great integrating and starting to get to know everybody and kind of find my place there in the city.
Great, welcome. And we're so glad to have you on board as part of the team and hope to meet you in person before too long.
Hey, thank you guys for coming on. And you're welcome to get off the webinar, Jackie. I'll, I'll text you in a bit. I want to thank Greg, he was very helpful in making sure we, we got these folks on, on the Zoom meeting. So thanks Greg for all your help.
Absolutely. Thanks Greg. Okay, next on our agenda this morning is we have an update from the Montrose County Public Health Advisor and Pandemic Medical Specialist, Dr. Joe Endragna. Does Joe need any introduction or can I just kick it over to Joe? I see nothing else. I think I'll just kick it over to Dr. Endragna to, to give us his update.
Thank you, everybody, for having me. Thank you to the city council and for Chief Hall for giving me the invitation. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here and we'll go through some slides. And happy to answer any questions as we go along or at the end, whichever works for the council. So our Emergency Operations Center, which was activated by the Porta County Commissioners, set out its mission early on as to save lives. And as our mission unfolded, we also incorporated to save jobs. And those can go hand in hand. First, I'd like to thank Bill Bell, Lane Hall, Anne Morgenthau, Lisa Kusmarsky, Chelsea Rusty, and Kate Adams for their support during the pandemic response. They've been really instrumental in helping to facilitate the interventions that we've put out as a public health team. Our agenda for today, I want to talk to you about why all of this matters. What could have happened, what were worst case scenarios? Where were, where was our mindset six weeks ago? Give you a current status update and look at some projections. So if, if you can think back to where you were at six, seven weeks ago, there was a lot of unknowns at that time. And we didn't know a lot about what this virus was, how it acted, who it would infect, and how they would progress. But we, we knew it wasn't going to be good. And what we were expecting in Montrose was that our hospital needed something around 48 ventilators, where they normally would have eight. They would need 100 med surg beds, where they normally would have 32. That we were expecting to overwhelm our skilled nursing facilities, that we would need non-congregate shelters. And if you remember, the, the biggest factor here was we wouldn't be able to get help because all the other hospitals would be surging at the same time. And so there was a lot of fear that there wouldn't be a hospital bed or there wouldn't be a ventilator for you if you needed one. In worst case scenario, now this is a draft and these formulas are still being reviewed, but worst case scenario, we could have seen over 120 people in Montrose needing a hospital bed at its peak. And that certainly would have overwhelmed our capacity. So we're going to talk about a few things under our current status. Where, where our hospital capacity is at now? Where we're at with testing? Where we're at with cases and deaths? So for hospital capacity, the purple line at the top here shows normal operating capacity. And this, this is around 50. The blue line here shows our total hospitalized patients. This could be for COVID-related or non-COVID-related matters. This red line shows you our total COVID confirmed and persons under investigation, meaning they're pending a test result. And this magenta line below shows you pending, persons under investigation, so pending a test, as a ratio of those that are confirmed. And that ratio has hovered around 2.76, we call it 3. So for every confirmed hospital COVID patient, we had about three patients in the hospital that were waiting on a test. And so the green bars show the confirmed number of cases and the orange bar shows the persons under investigation. And we see that our COVID possible hospitalizations peaked actually in early April, April 6th, with five confirmed cases at that time hospitalized. So with this fear that surge was coming and we thought this might be middle to late April or maybe early May, we set out to bolster the healthcare integrity. So in coordination with the hospital, we put together a tier-two alternative care site. This would allow us to expand med surg capacity, which would be like your normal inpatient floor level care with an additional 50 beds at an off-site facility. Meanwhile, the hospital had been working to bolster up their critical care capacity and the capacity to take care of people in their hospital. And as reported, I've reported this previously, they, they were able to do about a 500% increase in their existing ventilator capacity within a very short period of time. And that was because of their leadership there. After, after they made those efforts, we also set to put together a tier-three alternative care site. So this would be more for subacute care. You're too sick to go home, but not sick enough to be in a hospital. And a lot of times this is skilled nursing facility care. And so we worked with partners in the community to set up an additional 50 bed tier-three alternative care site. And then knowing that some persons would not be able to return to home for various reasons, and also hearing from our surrounding counties that people at altitude need to be able to, to convalesce or heal at a lower altitude on a lower amount of oxygen, they needed a place to go for that. So we set out plans to put together a non-congregate shelter in a hotel setting with an additional 50-bed capacity. And we also have worked to make sure that hospital transfers were possible. And fortunately, at this point, we do have other hospitals that are not as heavily hit with COVID as was projected. And at this point, we could transfer to outside hospitals if we needed to. Currently, the CDC has updated their, their testing criteria. And there's a lot of detail on this, but suffice it to say that the, the Montrose community has been really fortunate because of Montrose Hospital and their ability to supply testing kits to the, the Public Health Department and to clinics, to be able to test more than most counties have been able to. And with the CDC's testing criteria broadening like, early last week to include a whole host of symptoms, it made it easier for us to get more people in our community tested as well. We've also been able to leverage some of these new guidelines to test for the purposes of public health to stop any pending or known outbreak. The takeaway on this one is basically that if you're a person with a symptom of potential COVID-19 infection, you should be a candidate for testing here in Montrose. You still need to get an order from your healthcare professional and they may recommend a different course of action if they have a better explanation for your symptoms. This is a graph that shows our testing as it compares to the state and what our goals were. And so the top line, the orange line here, shows our testing rate in Montrose County versus the state's testing rate. And our goal was to be at 100% or more. And we have pretty consistently been in the 156% to 186% range for the testing that we do here in Montrose County. Again, thanks to Montrose Hospital for that and our public health nurses who set up a drive-through testing site at the Montrose County Event Center. The blue and the green columns show our goal testing ratio to, of negatives to positive results. One measure of, of whether we're testing enough is to say that for every positive result, we want about 10 negative test results. That tells us that we're penetrating enough into the community with tests available to, to really find the illness and then isolate appropriately. We've been short of that for some time now, hovering around the eight to nine ratio range. And part, and, and so an intervention that we put together was to decentralize our testing, to remove barriers to people getting tests. And so last week and the week prior, we were able to roll out clinic-based testing and we expanded our testing sites from two to seven. And that number will continue to grow, making it that much easier for people of Montrose City and County to get a test when they need it. This next graph shows you our current data. The green columns show you the number of total confirmed cases over time. And so as of yesterday, we were at 106. The orange line here shows you the total number of cases, new cases, in the previous seven days as of that date. And so we want this to trend down. And so after early April, we do see that overall that number is trending down, indicating fewer and fewer total new cases each week. The blue columns here show you the new cases per day. This is modified data and the next slide will, will speak a little bit more to that. So this shows you the new cases in a modified form. On April 10th, we got 12 positive cases back. But in the preceding week, there was logistics delays outside of the control of the county and the hospital that delayed us getting those tests run at the lab and resulted back to us. So if we accounted for those delays and where those results should have fallen in the week previous, then the new cases would look like this. And this indicates our highest amount of new cases reported in one day was in early April. The trend line here should not be used as much of a predictor. It doesn't take any consideration, any changing social behaviors or changing orders. And, but it just gives you a visual here. This is the number of deaths that we've had in Montrose. Unfortunately, as you know, we have had deaths. The dates here are pending confirmation, especially these more recent ones. So the point here is two things. Our highest amount of deaths in any one day was in early April that coincides with our highest number of positive cases and coincides with our highest number of confirmed COVID hospitalizations. And unfortunately, we've had 11 presumed positive or confirmed positive COVID-related deaths thus far. So where we go from here, I was just prepped by saying that 100% of the models are wrong. They cannot accurately predict the complexity of human behavior. The model also assumes that nobody leaves the community, nobody comes into the community, nobody dies, nobody gives birth. And we know that those things aren't true. So all of the models, whether they come from the federal government, the state, local, or private, need to be interpreted with caution. And as we learn more and more about our community's case rates, we'll continue to update these projections and put those forward. What this graph shows is that we had an exponential growth in cases early on in late March and into early part of April. And that peaked maybe around 1,100 actively infected persons. Of course, we didn't know, we don't know who all those people were. Our testing did not allow for that, but that's an estimate. And early April is when the stay-at-home orders really took effect in what we're calling social distancing efficacy. And that modeled about a 70% efficacy for our community. The state level is around 75% to 78%. And ours may have also been around 75%, but with some of the parameters that we put into our models, it fitted about 70% to mirror what we saw in terms of our hospitalizations. So the question is, where do we go from here? With the stay-at-home order expiring and us transitioning now into a safer-at-home model under the governor's orders and the state public health office, time will tell whether we fall into a 60% efficacy, a 50%, a 30, a 20, a 10. And this shows you the total number of active infections at one time, based on how our community's social distancing efficacy changes over the coming months. The red line at the bottom indicates a 60% social distancing efficacy. So we were at about 70. This would indicate a drop down to 60%, but you can see the total number of cases that are active still continues to downtrend. If we go to 50%, we see a little bit of an increase until about late June and then we start to decrease again in number of active infections. 30% is shown here in the light blue and that peaks again in, in late June, early July with over 1,500 actively infected persons. And then if we were to drop to say a 20% efficacy, that would be shown in this magenta-type color. That would show a peak in early June, late Ju, late June, excuse me, early July. And at about 2,300 actively infected persons. And then if we went to a 10% efficacy, nearly 2,500 actively infected persons. And the question really is, what does that mean for our healthcare systems integrity? And this graph shows you what might happen in terms of hospitalizations if we drop to a 20% social distancing efficacy. So let me walk through this. This beige color line here shows you the total number of actively infected persons. The blue line here shows you, which looks like a pyramid, two pyramids, shows you the model's expected number of hospitalized patients at any given point. Let's ignore the orange and the red. Those have to do with ICU and ventilator patient. And so those aren't as relevant right now for our conversation. And then this purple line shows you the act, the actual number of hospitalized patients on that date. And so you see the purple line follows the model pretty closely. And now we expect to start to see changes in our social distancing efficacy. Of course, there's a lag from when the safer-at-home order starts, the stay-at-home order expires, and when we start to see more cases. And so this would predict that we should see increasing number of hospitalizations of confirmed cases. Now, this, this is excluding those under investigation. This is confirmed only. And what we're happy to see here and hope that this is true is that even with a reduction in social distancing efficacy to 20% and nearly 2,500 infected persons, we would not overwhelm our hospital's healthcare integrity. And, and the reason for that is the slope of the curve. The whole point of our interventions was to flatten the curve. You all have heard that many times. So if we look at how aggressive this exponential growth curve was within a very short period of time, early on in the pandemic, versus this more longer drawn-out rate in, in comes in all of May and June, we get to spread those hospitalizations out over that time and hopefully not overwhelm our healthcare system. This graph shows you what the number of confirmed hospitalizations, confirmed positive hospitalizations would be under those different scenarios of 10, 20, 30, 50, and 60% efficacy. And the takeaway here is that under all of these models, we show no over, no surge of our healthcare system. And the more effective we are at our social distancing, the fewer people end up hospitalized. This does show hospitalizations continuing into September and October, depending on the model. If we're maintaining a 60% efficacy, then our hospitalizations would be projected to drop off in August. So how we transition from here? Montrose County Public Health Department at this point is not intending to implement any stricter public health rules than is already implemented through the governor's executive order and through the state public health office. As we fill at this time, those are appropriate for our county and what we're seeing. We're going to continue to track the data though. And what we want to see is that we have a decreasing or a stably low case count. Now, with the social distancing efficacy changing, and we don't know exactly how effective the community is going to be in that, we may see increases. But we want to maintain our, our capacity in our healthcare system, our nursing homes and our hospital. We want to make sure that testing capacity remains strong. And we want to maintain contact tracing. Our public health team has been doing a good job of following up with those positives and giving instructions for isolation and doing contact tracing so that we can follow up with quarantine recommendations to try and prevent the spread. If Montrose was to see that we were going to have a surge that might jeopardize the healthcare system, our team would reevaluate where we're at at that time. And that's it for the PowerPoint. I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Thank you very much for that. It looks like Councilmember Dave Frank has a question.
One of the questions that I've been facing with public comment is the presumptive cause of death. Is that a state mandated that if they aren't sure and they presume it, that they're calling it a COVID-related death?
My understanding is that the state is calling a person a COVID-related death if they die within 30 days of a COVID-19 test being positive.
So even if there is an underlying health condition that would have indicated that they would have probably passed away anyway, it's still being counted as a COVID death?
Yes, that's my understanding. And that's outside of our control. You may have heard, there was a newspaper article early on where the coroner did not call a positive, a, a COVID-related death. And the state eventually said it, it had to be counted as such. And so our deaths are, are at 11. And one of those is a presumptive positive death. The rest were confirmed COVID-positive and they passed away. And could have passed away from another reason, but they had the virus, so they got counted.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Dr. Joe?
I would just comment that I did an online order for something at Target and I went down and I would say that probably 60% to 70% of the people going in and out were not wearing masks.
Yes, thank you, sir. We've, we do get reports of that. And what, what we can do is to continue to message and ask our leaders in the community, like yourselves, to model the behavior that we think is going to help the most. And wearing a mask is a very helpful tool. So there's a lot of debate in the community about whether it's useful. There's a few things that There's a few things that are required to make it useful. One is community spread. We identified community spread in early April. What that means is that you can get it even if you don't go to an outbreak site, for example. Um, and the second part is a large number of people who are asymptomatic or have very mild symptoms. Um, and you might throw in third, a virus that's pretty hardy and can stay alive on surfaces for an extended period of time. And so, you know, for example, this virus can stay alive on a podium for four days. It's a wood surface and that's, that's, that's quite a long time. And so I may ca- I may be carrying the virus not knowing it. And I talk and I, and I leave droplets behind. And then those can become infectious agents to somebody else if that surface is not cleaned. And so the reality is by my wearing a mask, I helped to protect you much more than it protects me. But if we all wear our masks, we protect each other. And I think Montrose is really well known for taking care of each other, especially in trying times. And we can do our part by wearing a mask to protect everybody else and especially those that are most vulnerable in our population.
So I was excited to see, I, I was unfortunately forced to go to Walmart. But at the door, they were handing out masks to everyone that didn't have one. And then once you got inside, they once again offered people who hadn't gotten a mask, the opportunity to take one of their disposable masks. That was very nice to see. I think our educational program that we've got in place has been pretty effective. And I would like to continue to educate the public, of course, that it's to protect the other people that is the reason for wearing the mask. But thank you, Joe, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Dr. Joe? I think he might not be able to speak on all county, uh, responses about this, but he could probably find us out and answer if we had any questions in that regard, in addition to just the health pieces, but the county response. Okay, I've not really seen any questions. So Dr. Joe, thank you so much for joining us this morning and come onto our city council work session.
My pleasure, Mayor. I believe that, uh, Engineer Murphy had a, his hand up.
Oh, I missed that.
Yeah, quick question, just out of curiosity, and this is a million dollar question. Do you have a feel for, um, specific to our community? How much the confirmed cases represent actual, what that ratio is?
Oh, that's a very good question. I think at this point, um, as we're kind of in that, we're in probably the lowest point right now that I project over the next couple of months. Um, unless we do maintain high levels of social distancing and that would be about two percent of our population is actively infected at this time. So that's not a very large number. That means ninety-eight percent of the people that you come into contact with probably will not have COVID nineteen. But if our social distancing relaxes, then at some point in the summer, we may hit twenty-five hundred pe- people that are actively infected. And then that represents a much larger percentage of our population. As, a- as antibody testing, um, comes more available, there's a whole lot of debate about whether that's clinically relevant information. But it will be useful for us from an epidemiologic perspective to understand where our community is at and maybe where it's going, once we know more about who has had it, who has antibodies against it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't see your hands, Scott. Anyone else? Okay. Dr. Joe, thank you so much for joining us this morning and thank you to your colleagues who also were listening in on the phone. Appreciate your, your attendance. And, um, you do not have to stick around for the rest of our meeting. I know you're a busy guy.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor, I appreciate it and everybody else, I appreciate all this support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next thing on our agenda this morning is a pavement marking contract award recommendation. I will turn it over to Public Works Manager Jim Shad.
All right, thank you. I have a couple of recommendations today and, uh, the first one is for pavement marking or striping. Um, so we hire a contractor to do all of our long line striping, um, crosswalks, um, stop bars, anything, uh, related to marking on the pavement. So, um, we issued an RFP for this earlier this year. Um, and we did receive two bids. Only one of them was complete and requ- and had all the required documents, um, which was Stripe Lot. And we've worked with Stripe Lot before, have a, a good relationship there, um, they've done good work. Um, and so, yeah, we're recommending award of this contract to Stripe Lot. And it is a not to exceed, um, a contract amount of one thirty-five. Uh, we do have that budgeted in this year's budget. And so we're recommending award with, uh, not to exceed of one thirty-five to Stripe Lot. But I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, um, about that.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions from counselors or staff about this recommendation, about the process, about any of the information? Okay, oh yeah, Dave Frank.
Uh, Jim, just one quick question. Uh, I noticed in the work in the packet that it mentioned that they didn't fill all of the documentation requirements. What was it that they failed to fill out?
Uh, the bid bond in this case, which is a, which is very critical. It is a very important part of it. And, yeah, they, they did not submit that part.
Thank you.
Not, not the company you're recommending, but the other person, the other company that bid that was then not qualified to.
That's right, that's right. The, the Stripe Law that we're recommending, um, did submit all of the required documents.
Sure, a little like your homework packet, you gotta do all your homework or, or it doesn't.
That's right.
Okay, no partial credits here, I guess.
Yeah, and especially on the bid bond, it is very important. So, um, yes, we couldn't make an exception there.
Great, okay, thank you. Any other questions on this one? And if not, we'll go on to the next one. I mean, no, okay, then, let's see, pulling back to my agenda. The next one is a crack seal contract award recommendation from Public Works Manager Jim Shad.
Yep, that's me again. So, um, on this one, I'm gonna try to share a map real quick, hang on with me. Can you see that?
Hey, yeah.
So this is our, um, area of town that we are, um, proposing for our crack seal plan. Um, this is, would be areas that we would do both with our in-house crew and with our contracted crew. So what the, the contractor we're proposing today is to hire a contractor to do approximately half of this. We would do half in-house and half on the contractor. Um, so you see this year, um, uh, this happens to be one of eight. We have our whole city divided into eight pieces. This happens to be the piece that we're focusing on for twenty twenty. Um, kind of the south end of town and Cobble Creek, Otter Pond, um, Brown Ranch, that type of area. Um, and so, yeah, about half of it, um, would be, um, in the contractor's scope. And this is also, uh, again, a not to exceed contract amount. So this one, um, was a hundred and twenty thousand. And we, we pay them as they go basically. So they bill by the ton of, um, cracks and material used. So, um, we give them an area to focus on and they, they go until they reach the not to exceed amount of their contract, which is a hundred and twenty. Um, and obviously the more they can do, the better. We hope that they get, um, as much accomplished as possible. And then, uh, whatever they don't get, we will attempt to do with our, our own city, uh, streets crew.
Great. Um, how, is there a pattern? So you said you do an eighth of the city. And so do you just go around and, and it's pretty predictable what year you're going to be doing which section of the, of the city?
Yeah, yeah, we, we do, we, it's all separated into eight pieces and, um, just listed A, A through F. And we just follow that pattern. This year happens to be a letter A and we're doing that area town. Next year will be letter B and we'll focus on that area. So, yeah, we, um, if you want to know what area will be in twenty twenty-three, I can look at our map and, and look at what area we would.
Okay, so if someone was concerned and they wanted to know when their, when their neighborhood was going to be done, you could give them an exact year at this point?
Yeah.
Okay, interesting.
Jim, about how far does a ton take you down a street?
It depends on the street. So some of ours, that'll go a long way, especially the newer the street. Um, the cracks aren't as big or not as frequent. A ton can go a long ways. And then also some of our streets feel like you could put a ton in a block. So it, it really drastically depends on the street. I mean, it is very different all the way across town, so.
Jim, for clarity, that if there is this area of the city that the street requires crack sealing, that you can go outside of the scheduled matrix to address an, a, an actual need. So, I was aware that this isn't a ironclad, we're not going to touch your street until year twenty twenty-seven. But you understand that there is an option that if there's a necessity that it can be dealt with.
That's right. Yeah, we, we try to focus on the area that, that I showed on the map there. But if something else arises that, um, comes to a higher priority than, than what may be in that area, we, we would go address that as well. And most likely we would do that with our own in-house, um, streets crew. But, yeah, if something comes along that we need to look at sooner, um, we can address it, um, sooner, so, yeah.
Jim, um, have we used this company before?
Yes. I believe they, I believe they worked for the city, um, in, in twenty sixteen. I saw, not, not for me, I guess I'm not familiar with them, but they have worked for the city. Armor Pro Seal. Actually, Scott's on the call, he might remember working with them, but, um, I, I.
About the first year of Move Mo, when we were doing, you know, three million that first year, there were some streets that needed to be cracked sealed before. Um, we're able to do some of the surface treatment. And to help kind of with that surge, we use them and that work.
Good.
And, and Jim, will the workers be able to work and socially distance and still be effective? Is that, I guess, do we have a plan for all that?
Yeah, it is part of our requirement right now for all of our contractors to, uh, follow that guideline. And if they're not able to, that they then, um, don't work until we are able to, um, lessen that restriction. So, um, that, that's for our own crews and for any contractor to the city right now that, that they are going to be following social distancing and, um, and if, if it, for some reason is not possible in what they do, then they won't do it.
Very good, thank you.
We are able to, or we've been kind of experimenting with our own crew and, and how to perform that task and stay separate. And we are able to, it's, it's more difficult, of course, but, um, they use less people on their crew and, um, the tasks they're doing are significantly separated. So it is possible and, but that would be a, a requirement that we'll put on the contract.
Great, thank you.
I assume this work gets done when the weather is warm and there's a perfect temperature for this to happen and that's going to happen soon?
Yeah, actually now is a great temperature for it. So, um, when it's really hot, it's almost, it's too hot. So kind of early in the year and late in the year is, is kind of the, the time to get after it. And so we're actually cracking seals our, our crew, um, a couple of days a week right now. Um, and, yeah, we would, we would definitely, um, as soon as this is approved, um, bring them on as soon as they're available.
So I noticed that area, um, that's also happens to be where Elevate's working right now, digging up some stuff. So, um, I assume there's some coordination there, so work crews and trucks and equipment aren't bumping into each other?
Yeah, definitely. And, and crack seal can be pretty flexible as far as if there's an area that's going to be, um, being worked on another way or the street's going to be removed or something like that, that crack seal can, can skip an area and then come back. So it's pretty flexible and, and we're well aware of all the, uh, excavation permits with, uh, Elevate going on right now.
Great, thank you very much. Dave, you have a question?
And Jim, since, uh, based on a comparison sheet on the price and, and awarding by the preference point because of the Montrose company, since they're a local company, they, they should have a little bit more flexibility on schedule and availability? They don't have to ship crews here?
Yeah, most likely, um, because they're from here, it would should be a little more readily available. I mean, um, they, they likely, um, out of town as well. They probably travel for work, just like every other contractor, so, um, but, um, we will, we'll start working with them on schedule as soon as, um, we'll, we'll start working out contract details and stuff in the next couple of weeks. That way there's something ready to approve at the council meeting. Um, and that's when we'll talk about schedule and, and all that with them to get them onboard.
Great, thank you. Any, any more questions about that recommendation? Okay, we'll see that at an upcoming council meeting. Next on this morning's agenda is budget meeting dates for the twenty twenty-one budget. Finance Director Shaney Wittenberg, turn it over to you.
Good morning, everybody. Yeah, so the last couple of years, we've done a meeting in May. We call it our big picture meeting. Get a sense of where city council is, um, where their priorities are. I know this is kind of an odd year, twenty twenty-one will be, um, different than, you know, the last five or six years for sure. So I had that tentatively scheduled for this Thursday. But after looking at the calendar and kind of looking at, um, everything else that's going on, I was thinking we could probably move that to the first week of June. Give us a little more time, have a little more sales tax come in, um, kind of know a little better what our projection for revenue is going to be. So I wanted to check with you all to make sure that that, um, I was going to propose June second from three to five. And I wanted to make sure that was good with all the city councilmen. I think it's pretty good for the department heads.
June, you said June second, which is a Tuesday, that would be a normal council meeting. And then you said in the afternoon, so before our council meeting?
Correct.
There's usually a dart board meeting that afternoon.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it's right after the dart board meeting is what I.
Okay, so right between the dart board meeting and our city council meeting?
Yeah.
Great.
And I'd take other suggestions, I mean, that's just a proposed date.
Oh, look, it just popped up on the calendar. I'm looking at the calendar and now it's on it, okay. Great, that's Lisa, I think, doing that for us. Anyone have any concerns? It's too late, it's on the calendar. No, does anyone have any, does anyone have any concerns or questions? Or do you like the idea that it fits between two other meetings? So makes it pretty easy. Okay, I'm seeing thumbs up, great, okay. Shaney, is there anything we should do to be prepared as counselors coming into that meeting? Do we have any homework or should we just come with ideas and thoughts or?
I, I think that's kind of the, our, our mission on this meeting is more big picture thoughts, um, and ideas. You know, you'll have a little more information on, on sales tax, that type of thing. But, yeah, pretty much just that big picture, where we want to go in twenty twenty-one.
Great.
And then the second, uh, meeting I had, um, is the, is the, the, uh, city council retreat. We normally do that towards the, in September sometime or first part of October. I was gonna propose either September tenth or October second. This meeting's a little bit longer, um, probably from like nine to five. We usually do a, um, lunch, we bring lunch in. So if either of those dates would work for you all, that I'll get those on the calendar. And that's really to review what we've, what staff has done. So we take the big picture meeting and then we try to figure out how we can fit some of your priorities into our priorities or move everything forward in a, in a logical manner. So then that September retreat is really just reporting back to you all and, um, this is where we ended up. So before the October fifteenth required budget date.
Shaney, what was the second date? I got to ten September alternative, what was the other one?
October second?
Which is a Friday?
Uh, yes, I believe it is a Friday.
Either is fine with me.
Yeah, either is okay with me. Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
So shall we go with the September tenth date just to, um?
Yeah, I think so, because that way if we need to put it off for some reason, we have a little more time. Okay, I think that's preferable.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you very much. Okay, switching back to my agenda here. General City Council discussion, so this is the time we'll go around the room. And, um, and because we don't really go around an actual room today, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna take a raise a hands from our department heads. We'll start with our staff and then we'll move to counselors on anyone have something they want to update us about. Oh, look, everyone turn their screens on. Okay, Shaney, you put your hand up first, so I'm gonna go to you.
All right, so I just wanted to give you kind of a preliminary, um, report on sales and use tax. And, you know, March actually came in pretty good. Sales tax down by one percent compared to twenty nineteen. And Becky's still kind of massaging these numbers, making sure all the cash got to the bank and. And Becky's still kind of massaging these numbers, making sure all the cash got to the bank and that type of stuff. Um, but with sales tax down one percent, total down two and a half percent. But we're still only down less than a percent to budget. So that's really good news for March. Um, the public safety collection is actually up for March from our projection, which our projection was very conservative when it came to the public safety sales tax. Um, so those are, that was, that was good news. April might be a little bit different, but, um, yeah, for now, we're, we're feeling pretty good about it.
Can you clarify, when you compare us to March of twenty nineteen, our sales tax has gone, our rate has gone up from March of twenty twenty to March of twenty nineteen? Are we comparing apples and apples, or are you comparing the new rate versus the old rate?
No, we're, we're comparing the three pers, that's the three percent rate. So the general fund rate and then that point five eight percent for public safety.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Shaney about that?
Yeah, um, so I'm trying to remember when we really started the active stay-at-home program and how much that might have impacted March. Do you have any kind of sense for that, Shaney?
Um, you know, I don't, I think we started mid-March, um, at least that's what I recall. Staying at home. I think with the grocery stores and Home Depot, Walmart, Target, those places staying open, I think that had a positive impact on our sales tax. Um, so, yeah.
Interesting. Okay, so maybe April won't be so horrible, huh? Because of the same rationale?
Right.
Cool. I mean, not good, but better than it might have been.
But April, the toilet paper was no longer there, so sales dropped off.
Oh, I, you're right.
Shaney, do you have in front of you the, um, the lodging and the restaurant excise tax number? And how, how big a hit did those take in March?
Let me see if I can.
I know they're a very small dollar amount, but I'm just curious.
Um, so it looks like our hotel excise tax is gonna come in for March compared to March of twenty nineteen at forty-seven percent below twenty nineteen. And our restaurant excise tax down about twenty-four percent compared to last year. Um, with a negative budget variance of twenty-five percent. So that one is not so rosy. Um, and I know there were a couple of key restaurants that actually closed, closed in March. Might have been different had they stayed open. Um, but yeah, right now that's what we're looking at.
And do you have right there next to that percentage, a dollar amount as well? Cause that percentage sounds drastic, but the dollar amount i- is, isn't as drastic when you look at our general fund, is it?
Right, hotel excise tax, you're looking about a three thousand dollar difference. And restaurant excise tax is looking, it's almost a ten thousand dollar difference.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any more questions for Shaney? Or Shaney, did you have anything else you want to tell us before I go on to Chief Hall?
Uh, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chief, you were the next hand I saw. Do you wanna give us an update from the police department, please?
You bet. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, and Council, uh, we've been so involved in this COVID nineteen situation that uh, I haven't given you a crime update. Actually, it seems like quite a while. And so I just wanted to, uh, put everyone on the same page. The police department is, is still very busy. In fact, stats from last March and last April compared to uh, this March and this April, since we're comparing those kinds of stats as of late. Uh, we've seen an increase especially in domestic violence. And you can imagine why, or at least anecdotally I can. And then our public peace and disorder crimes. But with, really within the last week and a half to two weeks, um, our officers have also done a very good job in responding to, uh, you know, different things that we still respond to, whether that's a disturbance or a suspicious incident. And just here over this last weekend, uh, we recovered a, a fair amount of drugs, in my opinion, both heroin and methamphetamine on several different, um, incidents. Uh, we also, uh, just to kind of put everyone on the same page, we did have a aggravated robbery where uh, we have three suspects. Uh, one of them is, is still at large. We've identified the other two and, and arrested one. Uh, the, uh, victim and the suspects were both known to each other, so that this wasn't a, a, just a crime of opportunity or something that, you know, happened on the street like a mugging. Um, this was something that escalated into a, a robbery between, uh, these individuals. Um, however, it took quite a, a bit of time to investigate. Our detectives were out all day yesterday, along with patrol, looking for the suspects. And, uh, I think we have a pretty good, uh, case that we'll be filing with the district attorney's office. And then, uh, lastly, uh, between, uh, the Montrose Drug Task Force, the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, uh, we made a significant heroin seizure. Um, here just this last week. And to kind of put it in perspective, uh, it was one thousand and ninety-four grams of heroin, uh, which were seized. So that's one point one kilos of heroin, which is a significant seizure. Uh, whether you're in our small community, or Los Angeles, or New York City, or Denver. Uh, if you remember during the two A presentations, we were talking a little bit about heroin and how much just one gram of heroin is per hit. And, uh, there's, you know, varying results based on tolerance, but it's anywhere from ten to thirty doses per one gram. And we just recovered one thousand and ninety-four grams of heroin. And so unfortunately, drugs are still alive in our community and, and whether we are a pass-through community or unfortunately, we have, uh, in my opinion, a high market for that stuff. That's still ongoing, so it's great that we have two A and we're moving forward with hiring. Having a meeting this afternoon with Jamie Holmes and Commander Smith. And the, uh, the post academies were put on hold a little bit. Um, however, they've figured out their online learning and, uh, we will have our five graduating here, uh, in the next two weeks. And then, uh, we are really focusing on, uh, certified graduate, um, post-certified candidates, uh, here in the, in the next month to, uh, try to get them on board. And hopefully we can, um, get them on board and trained by September and, uh, have a much, a much larger force or a better force, so. But I just wanted to give you guys a crime update, since I hadn't done that in a while, and maybe a little bit of a hiring update. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you very much. Do we see any kind of a graduation, not necessarily a ceremony, but something where we can, uh, honor and celebrate those employees who are finishing that training and will be graduating?
Commanders and I talked about it this morning. I'm trying to balance the amount of time that that would take. Uh, we talked about it's such a unique and important opportunity, not only for them, but for their families. And we're limited to ten people and social distancing. So we kind of kicked around the idea of, do we do it, do we do it during a council meeting? And bring them in during a council meeting with a limited number of family and, and I'm there and we swear them in. And that's done, then broadcasted virtually. But with five of them, that's gonna take a tremendous amount of time. And so we're still kind of kicking that around and that was something that I planned on meeting with, with Bill and Ann about to try to include council and make it that, you know, honorable event. But still try to make sure that their families were included. And I'm just not sure what that answer is yet, so.
Okay.
More to follow.
Counselor Anderson, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I was curious, um, the, the big drug, uh, capture that you did. Does that get prosecuted in Grand Junction? Or is that something that Mr. Magliaro can contribute to our effectiveness in getting those guys off the street?
So, I do not know yet the direction that that case is going to take. Um, it's possible, it could, uh, go federal, although I do believe that it will probably be prosecuted locally. Um, it just kind of remains to be seen right now. And there's just some things that certainly I can't talk about.
Sure. I'm just curious.
Right. Uh, in reference to, uh, Matt, Matt has already been introduced. And he was already familiar with the task force. And all I can say is that he's already been extremely beneficial in helping them with their cases. And, uh, we will be, uh, meeting with the district attorney's office very soon to, uh, uh, to try to, uh, further that. And I don't, Stephen, if you have any questions or, excuse me, comments on that?
Yeah, some things in the works, Roy, uh, and some, uh, meetings on the calendar already.
Great. Yeah, uh, it just seems like a very effective use of our initial tax funding, so. I'm glad to see that that's moving forward. Thanks.
And I'm kind of excited, uh, you know, next week, Bill and I be presenting the, the two A, or excuse me, tomorrow night? Sorry, not next week. We'll be presenting the two A report card. And even with all this COVID nineteen situation going on, um, I'm pretty excited. I think there's a lot of things that we've done and, and, uh, we're, we're still moving forward, so it's good.
Great, thank you very much. Does anyone else have a question for Chief Hall, counselors or staff? Dave Frank?
Yeah, um, I noticed that on social media and, uh, other places in the paper, we're seeing that the PD is now gonna be responding to traffic accidents. And I was just kind of curious if there's been a change in the reporting of fender benders and traffic accidents across that spectrum of when the stay-at-home versus now.
Uh, I haven't looked at the latest stats. We just changed that, uh, last week. And so, uh, before, uh, we were asking, you know, our citizens to report the minor fender benders online. Uh, but that's one of the first things that we changed, you know, with kind of how the safe or stay-at-home to safer at home. So I, we definitely are gonna see an increase in the reporting. But I don't think it would be an increase in the number of accidents. I think those are probably remaining steady. It's just that now we are taking those reports instead of having them go online, so. If that answers your question, hopefully it does.
Great, thank you very much. I do not see any further questions for Chief Hall. Thank you very much for that update. Um, and any other department heads? Before I go to our city manager, Chelsea, you must be busy.
Sorry, there we go. Yes, things are still continuing to be busy. We're closing on average about four loans a week. Um, still processing those. The applications have slowed down a bit. So our hope is that we've helped the businesses who, that needed the help. And now things will start to get going again and they'll be able to make money. So, uh, we are seeing the marketing cooperative grants garner more interest with even businesses that have had to change their model. And so I think we'll continue to see applications, um, of that until our budget is exhausted for those. So that's really great news. Um, the business update call last Monday, which featured Dr. A and, um, some of us discussing what, you know, safer at home looks like for businesses, had over a hundred attendees and almost that many who went back and watched it later. So I think that was a really effective use of our resources. And I think everyone who was, um, a contributor on that. This week we'll be having a business update call on Wednesday as normally scheduled. We'll be talking about local innovations and adaptations that businesses and organizations have made that they plan on carrying forward after COVID. And so that'll be a great way that other businesses can learn from like businesses on how they can adapt. Some of our businesses have been closed. And so this is the first time they'll be thinking about opening up and what that might look like. So we look for that to be a good opportunity. Um, we've received a lot of questions about restaurants, when they're gonna open, are they gonna be able to open, what that might look like? And so we'll address that a little bit on Wednesday, but we're not gonna be able to provide any details that aren't already being provided by the state of Colorado. But we will let people know what we do know in a brief update there. Um, other than that, the communications team is busy at work like usual. And so, um, frequent updates coming out and we're trying to just stay on top of all that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Terry Wilcox, is there anything, I mean, it was nice to meet our newest employees this morning. Do you wanna give us an update on what it looks like for our employees at the city with kind of, are we going slightly back to work with distancing or what's going on as an employer? Okay, yeah, find that mute button.
Well, find that mute button. Um, well, um, actually, um, we are coming back slowly but surely. And I think Bill and Ann might have more to say on that. But, um, we do have a meeting today to look over, um, policy for people start coming back to work, uh, to maintain the social distancing and the, and, and, and the temperature that's required right now.
Okay, thank you. Other department heads wanna speak up? Scott Murphy.
You have a quick project update. Um, so the dam up at Serra was topped out. Uh, so all the embankments rebuilt and they're now going on to the final instrumentation and controls. As I was all nervous is the gate that controls the entire dam is certified by a person out of California, a former manufacturer who is all, their, their company is under lockdown, so. Um, refilling, everything hinges on that person being able to come out for three hours, fine tune and adjust the thing to, uh, allow us to operate it, so. Um, we're at their mercy right now, but we're hoping for the best. And, and worst case, if that gets delayed, Bostwick Park has indicated they would probably, should, because of the water year this year, should be able to work with us and hopefully fill later, um, into the year. So, um, that's going well and is on track otherwise. Uh, you guys know River Bottom Drive is open, so they're doing some finish, you can work on the sidewalks and then yow down turn lane. Um, they will be adding that flashing crosswalk also across River Brand. We've had some questions about that. It'll be a push-button one, just like we've done downtown. Um, speaking of crosswalks, we also got the approval from CDOT for, uh, the cross, flashing crosswalk at Sealy, uh, which is something that's been a dream for a long time. Um, and I finally got that through CDOT and construction will probably be starting here within the next one to two weeks. Um, should only take a couple of days to put those up, so. Love push-button ones there. And the underpass at West Main, the wall is poured, so I returned to sleeping again. Uh, that was a very challenging construction. We're very lucky that we got the contractors we did, um, they did a, I mean, I was, it was, it was amazing. It's the favorite part of my job to sit and just watch ingenuity in action. Um, very difficult shock reconstruction. They're blowing the concrete up onto the wall and then trying to shape it and sculpt it and make it look nice. Um, so now we're working on the cap for that. So there's a, a curving that goes on top, essentially trim that out. Um, and after that cures, all that will get coated by the original contractor. And, uh, should be getting close to buttoning all that up, so.
Great.
The, the end is in sight.
Fantastic. Great. Any questions? Okay, another department head, or Chelsea, you have a question?
Well, I just wanted to mention that we're also working on the mural. That will sort of be the finishing touches of this project that Scott was talking about, um, which will require another CDOT permit, but Scott sounds like he's really good at that, so. Um, that'll be good. But the applications for the, call the artists, um, end on May twenty second. And so we're already seeing a lot of interest on that. Just wanted to let everyone know.
Cool. And it requires CDOT's, uh, a permit or permission because it's on a, an underpass that goes under a CDOT highway? Yeah, okay, great. Other department heads want to chime in with an update? And you know, not required, I mean, you don't have to say anything. Okay, then in that case, I'll kick it over to the city manager's office. Either Ann or Bill can jump in.
I can give just a quick update on, uh, what we're doing. Uh, a little expansion on what Terry was talking about. We just want everybody to know we are still providing services and we have, and I emailed out council. Uh, we're trying to let the community know that construction's booming in Montrose right now. It didn't really slow down at all, so. Uh, we've been really busy trying to keep up with the developers and the builders in our community. So those services have been really made better using technology and, and electronic inspections and electronic documents and those types of things. So we're really proud of the efforts of the staff in those divisions. And then Public Works, uh, Streets and Parks divisions, uh, have slowly started coming back to work early last week. And Utilities, uh, this week. uh have slowly started coming back to work early last week and utilities uh this week. And wastewater treatment plant has been operating the whole time and just working on different types of shifts to keep everyone safe over there, so. We're slowly starting to reintegrate our employees into the workforce, we're sticking with the governor's orders and trying to keep under that fifty percent mark as far as total staffing for employers over fifty. We fall into that category, technically, we could probably exempt ourselves from a lot of those rules because we're a critical government service, but we want to provide a good example to all of our other manufacturers and our businesses in our community that have to follow those rules and keep our employees safe, which is the best way to do it, and so we're finding that we're hitting about that fifty percent mark with our law enforcement and our public works activities, and so a lot of our city hall employees. Uh, in fact, a- almost all of them are still telecommuting, working from home, uh, coming here to city hall. Uh, if they need to do a large print job or go through the mail process and uh payments on utility billing, those types of things, but then they go back home. And so thanks to IT for keeping us up and running, Greg and his team's doing an excellent job of that. We're able to provide all those services we need and keep our employees safe at the same time, so. I just want to let everybody know, uh, in that general plan, mid-May, so here in a in a couple of weeks uh, we'll be trying to transition if uh uh Dr. Joe, who you heard from today and county public health and the governor's office stays on the track that it is now, we'll try to go from tier four down to a tier three as far as the city organization and and start working our way back into uh working behind the glass with uh our constituents and customers. And then that will last about a month and then hopefully we'll be able to work in person again. Uh, that'll depend a lot on the rules related to the size of meetings, right now it's no, no meetings, no gatherings over ten people. And so that doesn't let us meet in person for department head meetings, council meetings, uh, planning commission, all those things that we would normally have about fifteen to twenty-five people, uh, so we want to be cognizant of that and make sure that we're not violating those rules and setting a good example for that. One of the difficult things has been uh on the event planning side and and the clerk's office this time of year is really busy with people wanting to do family reunions and use the Lions clubhouse and the park shelters and and just plan for things, uh, that's been difficult because we've had to try to figure out where we're headed in the future, uh, just talking to Lisa this morning, uh, they were talking about some things planned for August. And with the dates changing, uh, it's just, everything's in flux at the moment, so people are being pretty patient. And the clerk's office, I know, has been really patient with people as they they change their dates based on what's going on out in the community. So we're working through all of those things and then uh I'm excited, like Blaine mentioned, to do the two A report card tomorrow at the regular council meeting. Things are moving forward, we are starting to, we've lost a couple of police officers or we are going to lose soon, uh, just due to attrition. Uh, family moving out of town, getting closer to family, those types of things, so. What we're finding is we're we're hiring to just fill those positions, so we actually aren't into the new hiring yet of the sworn officers. And uh, we're still sticking on the track, what we've talked about with council in the past, of limiting our seasonal hires citywide to save some dollars just to make sure that we're conservative, uh, as the the meeting the gathering numbers get bigger, so if the order changed to twenty-five or less people instead of ten, we'll talk about sports and those types of things moving forward, and when we get to that point, then we would hire seasonals as we go to support those efforts. Golf course seasonals are being hired and golf course activities are going really well, Tom Young's done a great job. So I think uh everyone on team's been working really hard and it's nice to have a light at the end of the tunnel as far as trying to get our community back to work, trying to get the the restaurants and the retailers to be able to uh allow patrons into their facilities and we're moving as fast as we can uh with the advice of the county. Uh, to make sure that we do it in a as quickest way possible, but the safest way possible, so we're not rushing to put our citizens at risk. I thought the statistics presented were really, really great and I do want to mention that uh Blaine and I for the first month hadn't really been tapped into what the county was working at, working on the public health side as much as we were on the the E O C and the business side of things, now we're we're included in all of those meetings. Daily meetings up until this week, now they're going to a couple of days a week, but I I just want to say, I think the county is doing a great job. Dr. Joe and Sue Hanson, uh, in particular, have really uh just put a lot of their heart and soul into this project and as I get to work with them more, uh, we just had a call on Friday with John Washbush and Sue Hanson and Dr. Joe, me and Blaine and and a couple others, and we decided that it's really nice to have these meetings together and we want to continue those even when COVID's over. So I think we're gonna, we're gonna get out of this deal a much greater relationship between the city and the county. We all know that it was good a couple of months ago, but I would say right now it's excellent and we want to carry that forward uh in perpetuity, really, we're starting to get to know each other a lot more than we did before.
That's fantastic. Great. To that extent, Bill, the county of Montrose doesn't intend to ask the governor for a waiver of any kind of the restrictions, do they? Are they talking about that at all? I know Mesa County has.
So we've talked about that quite a bit uh this last week and uh we, city and county together, uh, there was there was some r- rumor to that effect and some rumblings from some citizen groups here a couple of weeks ago in Montrose, some activist groups who uh, some of them were even petitioning out on Maine and Townsend intersection and they want to uh disregard governor's orders, presidential orders and just open everything back up immediately. We decided as a city and county that that's not the right thing to do and and our numbers are totally different than Mesa County, so. Uh, Mesa County is in a totally different circumstance than Montrose and we talked a lot about why that is and and everything we've heard is, based on the statistics, the closer you are to a ski resort tourism town, the higher your numbers are, and we know that we're a pass-through community, we're a regional hub, so we have pass-through tourists that are going to Reston Butte and Gunnison County and up and to Telluride, and we also know people from Gunnison County and San Miguel County and Delta County come to Montrose to shop and buy their food and go to the doctor. So with all the people coming in, we just had more activity, which leads to uh potentially more issues in your community. We also had, like Dr. Joe mentioned, a better testing rate, so uh testing more people results in more positive tests. Uh, but the way it works with the governor's office to be exempt and and get a waiver, you have to show a downward trend for a couple of weeks and you have to show that your community is on the downward uh as far as number of positive test results, those types of things, we're not there, so even if we wanted to do a waiver, most likely it wouldn't be approved for Montrose County. But uh, right now, we're not even talking about trying to do one, doesn't mean we don't care about our businesses and uh and our manufacturers and our our office buildings, we want all of them to get up and running, but we we have to do it in a slow and methodical manner that makes makes sense for everyone.
Great, thank you for that update. Does anyone have any questions for Bill Bell? Okay, then let's go around for um comments from councilors. There's no particular order here, so we're gonna go with whoever wants to jump in first. Dave Bowman. You're on mute, Dave.
Yeah, I'd like to uh read a letter um from a nine-year-old boy, I hadn't been in city hall for literally six weeks and when we got the message from Lisa Del Piccolo last week that we should all check our mail, I I went in and and I got this letter and it's actually, it was received uh March nineteenth, so I apologized to this young man. It says, Dear Mr. Mayor, I want to talk about the magnesium chloride tank. Yes, I understand why you did it, but I have an idea to make it better. My idea is to have a fundraiser for the homeless in the food bank by having an auction for a panel. Talking about the fences there, when someone buys a panel, they can paint a mural on each panel, please tell me your thoughts. And he included his address, he said he doesn't have a phone because he is a nine-year-old and signed it. I'm so excited to hear what you have to say, respectfully, Corbin, a concerned nine-year-old. And I just thought that that was, just spoke to the sense of community in Montrose, you know, and and then if you haven't been out to North Ninth, you probably should go out there and look at the fence, it's I'm very disappointed with what that company's done, but that's a different issue. But here we have a nine-year-old boy pulled out his pencil, just very pretty printing for a nine-year-old boy and said, I want to do something for our community to make it better. And to me, that's truly the spirit of Montrose, and I just, I wanted to share that with councils and and our community so that people know even our nine-year-olds want to make Montrose better. Thanks.
Thanks, Dave. Who'd like to go next? Dave Frank.
I'm not sure if anybody else is going on, but uh C M L has a bunch of webinars, a whole series of webinars. And I've been attending all of those and if you aren't, there's a lot of good information on there. And uh, there's one or two a week that's going on, updates on FEMA, updates on community responses. And I just think that those are a great, great uh resource, so I it would be entertaining and interesting to hear from the other uh council members that are attending those. And I would love to have an opportunity to discuss some of that with everybody, so just a thought.
And remember, if we discuss those with three or more, we we do need to notice a meeting and post an agenda. Um, but I do encourage you to attend, I I know we've all been getting a bunch of invitations for webinars and meetings from the state level from professional organizations, um, and there is a lot of information, it feels a little bit like drinking out of a fire hose sometimes with the number of invitations to webinars. Thanks, Dave, anything else, Mr. Frank? Okay, Mr. Anderson.
So that kind of begs the question, Barbara, I wondered if you or Bill have heard any any sort of talk about whether or not the C M L conference will go ahead in June?
Yeah, I can give you a little bit of um update. So right now, the contract between C M L and the um host hotel. If C M L canceled the conference, there'd be huge financial repercussions because the governor hasn't extended any kind of orders through through June, so there's, I think, um practically no way C M L conference is gonna happen, they just haven't been able to officially say that because of the contract language. So I I say, as a C M L board member, you can, you can um make plans for mid-June that do not involve the C M L conference. Um, and when the governor, um, when when C M L can effectively cancel that without huge financial penalties, um, that'll be what what C M L would like to do. And looking at a blended online slash in-person two-day C M L conference in the fall for educational purposes, um, and let me back up to June because bylaws require that C M L elects new board members and sets the dues every at a annual meeting. There will be a short online annual meeting to take care of the required points of business, but it won't be uh professional development kind of conference, so it won't necessarily be something you need to put on your calendars. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's kind of what I thought was happening, but I haven't heard anything for a couple of weeks, so. Uh, just the other other comment I wanted to make was to thank um whoever arranged to have Dr. Joe come to our meeting today, I thought that was really informative and um interesting and hopefully uh, a lot of the public had an opportunity to see that, so. I don't know who made those arrangements, but thank you, that's all I got.
And Dr. Joe's been doing similar updates when um when the county goes live in conjunction with the city. And I believe they're posting all those online, I know I'm watching them via Facebook, but the county will do an update, Dr. Joe will do an update. Usually Sue Hanson, um, someone from the city, Chelsea Rostie often does it. And and those are really informative and they seem to happen about once a week. So if you're looking for more information like that from Dr. Joe, it's out there, I can help you find it.
Okay, thank you, that's good to know.
Doug Glassball.
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments as we're starting to get into the budget area, I think we have to be very careful this year. I think our tourist traffic is not only going to be down, but that could be an extended period of time that we're having to deal with that. Because I think it's gonna take a lot of people a while to recover financially to where they have extra money to spend, so I think that's one of the areas that we're gonna really have to take a look at uh when we get into the budget sector on this. That's all I've got.
Thank you, yeah, I attended a meeting that um a bunch of industry folks in San Miguel County had and tourism industry um as a member of Flights Alliance and yeah, they're really looking at a very slow recovery from this as a tourism destination for San Miguel focusing hopefully on on car visitors for this summer instead of flight visitors, so it'll be interesting to see how that affects us as a pass-through community for sure.
Okay, I'm gonna go with a couple of things that are just very logistics. First, don't forget that we all need, councilors, you all need to take a picture with you and your letter and email it to Bethany so she can put together the community video for tomorrow. Um, this is my letter, not yours, make your own. And um, second, logistics-wise, so um I think there's a better way to do our pledge of allegiance tomorrow night so that we aren't all talking and Zoom is trying to do it and we just sound like we're a mess, so I've asked our youth council representative to lead us in the pledge tomorrow, and I'm gonna ask you all as participants to mute your microphones doing that. Um, and I'll work with Greg and we'll maybe get a nice flag image on the screen, I've seen other city councils do that where um, the screen is just the flag for that time and we're all saying the pledge and we're honoring the pledge at home, but rather than it looking like a chaotic mess, we have one voice and that'll be our youth counselor tomorrow night. Dave Frank, do you have a comment about question?
Yeah, while I uh absolutely salute and support standing for the pledge of allegiance, standing in a Zoom conference presents a very unflattering picture.
Well, that's a good point, and I think that's perhaps one of the reasons I've seen other cities just screen share a giant flag and replace the screen instead of all of our lovely images. Um, there's just a big flag, and so we're gonna see if we can do that tomorrow night as well. Great, okay, um. Thank you, everyone, I know everyone's been working really hard, I've been listening in on a ton of webinars and meetings and I'm trying to take all this input from so many different ways, I I follow and listen to what a lot of other cities our size are doing. I was really surprised yesterday when one announced that they would start accepting recycling again after eight weeks of not re- accepting recycling. And so some of those things that we take for granted, like that we've just been able to continue having recycling and trash services uninterrupted here. Um, I'm really thankful for our staff that make that happen. That we have been able to continue doing the job of local government and taking care of our citizens and meeting their day-to-day needs and working hard to be innovative, thank you all for your help. I think we're good for today and we'll see each other tomorrow for a combined dark meeting in the midday and the city council meeting tomorrow night. Anyone have any last minute questions or concerns about our schedule? Great, okay, thank you very much, I'll see you all later.